I think that given the amount of publicity and just general activity that's happening around Machine Gun Rage Project, that it's time for our board to discuss taking a formal position on the project. As one of the three, I guess, three, four budding towns to the base, a town that has been greatly impacted by operations that have occurred at the base over time, this is an issue of concern to many of our residents. And I have been watching and listening what's been happening with this process over the last six to 10 or 12, maybe 12 months, probably six to 10 months. And candidly, I don't like what I've seen. And that really started at the outset in last October, when a 30-minute YouTube video was published to educate the public on knowledge about the project. And part of the opening of that video was how the Boards of Selectment had been briefed during the annual JBCC briefing session the previous two years. So for those that don't know, typically every May, the commanders from the base come and brief us on things that are happening out there. They did not come in 2020 due to COVID, but they specifically cited that they briefed us about this project in 2019 and 2018, which of course, I went and watched the videos. And yes, they did brief us, which was all of one bullet point on a single slide of a 40-page slide deck each year. The first year, they spent eight seconds, the next year, they spent 12 seconds. And I might be off by a few seconds, but it doesn't seem like a very honest place to start, from my perspective. Given other things that we've seen happening, what we're really looking at here, from my perspective, is a very rushed process, a process that has been steered to be favorable towards the desired outcome, and one that has not given the public the right opportunity for input. And beyond that, I don't know large groups of people who greatly support this. This is not a discussion about politics. This is not a discussion about supporting our military. This is a discussion about how this could potentially impact our community. And unless somebody can give me a million percent assurance that this is not going to impact our community, I don't see why we would support something like this. Lived in this town for a long time. I saw what happened here in the early 90s, when a lot of the jet fuel cleanup happened with the ground. I know the families who received bills from the federal government that had the finger pointed at them, that it was their problem. There are test wells 175 feet from my bedroom today that are waiting to be kept. I don't know why any of us would want to sign up for additional challenges. On top of all that, the email that was delivered to the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce two weeks ago is beyond unacceptable. I respond very poorly to threats. I think everybody knows that. We're not going to be threatened by the military, that they're going to impact our economy if we don't publicly support them. That is unacceptable. And I hate to have to go here, because it's maybe disrespectful to some, but it was disrespectful to us. It was disrespectful to those that received the email. I called Wendy Northcross today. I said, Wendy, have you heard from anybody about this? Has anybody called you? Has anybody written you a letter of apology? The answer was no. That is unacceptable. I've provided you with a number of documents this evening. The Mashpee Board of Selectmen has already voted to take a formal position in opposition to the project. I've provided you with a draft copy of the letter that they're reviewing. It's not been adopted. I've provided you a copy of the email that I just referred, the threatening email. There's a couple of sound study documents that were sent to me by some folks today, and I included those as well. And then I also, in my conversation with Wendy, this is the Massachusetts Military Reservation Master Plan Report from 1998. And Wendy was one of the people who participated in generating this report. And there's a number of areas in here that are specifically highlighted regarding how planning will take place, regarding the future of the facility and installation, and what things would change, very specific to water protection, and water protection as it applies to those northern 15,000 acres. It's worth taking a look at. So I think my position here is clear. I think that we need to be thinking about putting together a letter ourselves and addressing it perhaps at least to the same folks on this letter, including Governor Baker. My personal desire here is that this board takes a position to not support the project, and that we do that in a formal capacity.
Well, I'm gonna take the opposing view. I disagree. I reported back to this group over a year ago, or almost a year ago, when Bud and I were invited to the base, because they wanted to make sure the information was getting out, as all of the Boards of Selectmen around the base and all the managers were invited. We did an hour and a half briefing, and I have, I can't believe that we haven't, this report is in our folder, so I'm sure it's public. And if you have it in yours, and if you follow through what has gone on for the last six years, every single agency has reviewed this project. Environmental Protection Agency, there's a standalone agency on the base since 2002, since the spills, which are civilians assigned to the base, five, to watch every environmental movement of anything out there, and they have to sign off. If you read this report, and I can't believe it hasn't been in the paper, they have covered for six years, everything they're supposed to do. Every single agency, federal, state, the base itself, has signed off on this project. They've done noise studies. 2015, they did a noise study in which they put sensors along the whole base. They had sent notices to every abutter on the property, told them they were gonna fire the guns off, and wanted to hear if they had anything to say about it. No complaints. They did some secret ones to see if they'd have complaints. And when they didn't, they moved the range a thousand yards further into the base, just to make sure. All of this, I haven't seen in the paper. But it was, it's in these reports, and it was explained to us very clearly when we were there. There were a bunch of questions on, that they supplied to this report, about the environmental impact on water. They list the agencies that studied that, that EPA and the rest of them were all involved in this. So I get a little concerned when I get briefed on something like this from all the powers to be, and they publish a report, which we have, which explains everything that was discussed here at that microphone, but I haven't heard a word about it. I haven't seen a word about it balancing off what's been said. They have a note, they have a zone where you cannot fire a bullet that lands anywhere off the base. So shooting at the Forestale School isn't gonna work, which is some of the stuff that's been said. The copper jacketed bullets do not explode and create lead all over the place. They have catch bases. If anybody paid attention during the, during the early years of pollution out there, we used, as police officers, shoot on those ranges. We qualified on those ranges. There's been millions of rounds fired on those ranges. One of the mediation factors they did, just for the sake, not because they found lead down in the ground, they didn't, not below one foot. But what they did do is they built catches on every single one of those ranges. Special catches, which were accepted by all of the agencies to say that this was okay. The bullets go into rubber, they get caught in there, and they clean them out every couple of years. So the idea of bullets are gonna create water, water issues and all that, it's just not a fact. And it's all in these reports. And I just get a little concerned when I see statements being made that could have been, at least you could have followed up and see what the opposition is, or what the, what information could be supplied that may have answered your questions. In this report, there's probably 20 questions in the back, most, about all the environmental issues that were mentioned today, the types of ammunition, how they're protecting the water, how they've already, already done all the studies about how it could impact the water. It's here. So as far as I'm concerned, I have a serious problem. Because if this is true, if we're gonna say this is true, then I don't see the issues that we're talking about.
So why are we not hearing this from them? Why are we hearing it from?
Well, we did. I mean, they didn't come here, but Bud was invited.
I'm just saying, like, from the perspective of the general public, right? And I, and a number of the issues that you brought up, right? I didn't even go down those roads. I went down the roads of them basically misrepresenting what they told us, which is totally true. The threatening email, that's totally unacceptable. They should be spending their time sending out this information and convincing people of that, rather than making threats towards the general public.
I don't agree with the email, but I don't see the email having anything to do with whether a machine gun range is on the base. He's speaking, his personal idea of how to punish people or whatever, but that doesn't deal with whether the machine gun range has been properly vetted, and it's been six years. This project has been going on for six years. The deforestation, the clear cutting of trees, they're giving 260 acres to Crane Reservation off the base to replace those trees. The environmental people don't have a problem with that. But I don't see that in the newspaper. All of this has been in these reports. And I'm gonna give it to Teo, she's here, and you can do what you want with it, Teo, but I think some of this information should go out, because it clarifies a lot of the stuff that I've been reading about that I don't like. So that's my position on it. I certainly would not take a position to not support based on this, based on this information. I wouldn't.
You should read the highlighter report from 1998, and see how it cross-references with your other information regarding the defined process of how things should be done.
All I can tell you is what is in this report, and unless they're lying...
Because we know they wouldn't do that.
Fine.
I'm not trying to argue with you, really. I'm just saying, this may have been going on for five years, but it's been in the public eye for like, a year.
David, there was a 30-day public open session after we went, and it was just finished. It had 600 people complain. So people had access to this process. And they handled those, all those 600, whatever, complaints that came in. So they allowed the public a chance to have a say, and people did avail themselves of it. So it isn't like it was out there in a magical world that just showed up.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm trying to take a very balanced opinion on this, to be honest with you.
Bobby?
I have a couple of questions. I read a while back that the National Guard at the base, whatever, had been to the Selectmen's meeting in Bourne, and they presented it to them. At that point, I said to myself, I said, Jesus, it's in Sandwich, and they've never came in here to present it to us. And that kinda leaves a bad taste in my mouth. It's in our town, but we never got them to propose it to us. And what I'd like to see maybe is the Cape Cod Commissioner, whoever it may be on the Cape, to do a groundwater study, or finally get some information from them before we make a decision to find out, you know, exactly what's gonna happen to the groundwater. Is there a threat?
All I can tell you, Bobby, is you got it in your packet.
Oh, I know, and I've dealt with the military before, and I know some of the things that have gone out there and not really up front. Over the years, we've had problems with them. But I find it very peculiar, they, why didn't they come in and talk to us? They went to Bourne, but they didn't come to us. And they didn't get a very good reception in Bourne, from what was in the paper. So that's, that's my question. Why didn't they come talk to us? Now, they talked to you guys, but, you know, as representatives, but why'd they go to Bourne, not come to our Selectmen's meeting, present it?
I have a sneaking suspicion that the meeting that we were called to was a result of them being advised that they weren't getting it out to the public enough.
Yeah, I don't think they have, but whatever. I'd like to see something from the Cape Cod Commissioner, or whatever, you know, group from the Cape on the groundwater, get a decision from them. If they've looked at it, I'd like to see that.
Am I correct in remembering that David admitted that they were not getting this information out?
I thought that they...
Something to that effect, like...
They, I think they admitted they had a public relations problem at some point, or some version of that.
Yeah, I remember, I remember that. And then, and, you know, much to you, and I, it was funny, the other night, I was talking with a, I'm sure he's watching right now, I'm not gonna name him exactly, but he's a retired commander in the Coast Guard. And the letter, he actually made a point of coming over to me and speaking to me, and, you know, that this letter, you know, was, in his eyes, and mine as well, was insulting to every person that's on base that's doing the training, you know, that they would, you know, come to the Cape to do their annual training, and then be, you know, more or less quarantined on base, and that people were, you know, being, you know, more or less ordered to spend their dollars elsewhere. Yeah, I find that really hard to swallow. And especially that there was no, you know, formal retraction of the email, you know, either to the chamber, or even to the, you know, the host communities around. Because, you know, that, you know, even in his own letter, he, you know, says that, you know, if they, you know, kinda like, you know, if we kill their local businesses, you know, they'll accept us more. You know, for me personally speaking, more or less on that letter, I'd like to see something come from him. I don't know if, you know, we sent something back to say...
I think he's gone.
I, I think so, too.
It's bad public relations on top of bad public relations. And honestly, right? Mike has, Mike has his very strong perspective based on a bunch of information that he's received, right? I don't feel like I have enough information to truly support anything, but in the interim, I can't support something if I don't have the right information, and the press around it is bad. And it's, it's not like fabricated press, this isn't fake news, like, this is the actual email. These is the actual documents about things that were talked about, you know, as a result of what happened before 25 years ago. So the history is bad. That's the problem. The history is bad. There's obviously a ton more oversight than there ever was before, but the history is bad, then we have poor information coming out, not enough information getting widely distributed. COVID is a factor, there's all these different things going on, but in the interim, I just can't sign up. And there's a lot of folks that I think feel the same way.
I'd like...
Now, I'm not against the base, I'm not against the military, I'm not against training, I'm not against guns, any of that stuff, but this is of concern.
I'd like to see, and we haven't seen either, the hours of operation. Are they gonna be shooting 10, 12 o'clock at night, waking up the kids in the neighborhood? I live on the service road, and I hear them shooting over on the Greenway Road. S-range. And that's 9, 10 o'clock at night? I was down in East Sandwich, I could hear them the other night. They haven't even come to us and said, look, we're not gonna fire after 7 o'clock at night, whatever. If you fire a 50 caliber machine gun, you're gonna hear it all the way down to standing your neck. And I've heard nothing.
All I can tell you is, they did sound testings in 2015 and after, and supposedly, if there's anybody out there, the neighbors, 200 and something neighbors, all got notices to listen, to see if they could hear the machine gun. And they, they did it again secretly, to see if somebody would complain. And the sensors didn't show anything, and no one complained. So, and then they moved it further into the base, anyway, just to make sure. So I don't know what the truth is. I, I live here, Bobby.
I've seen the sensors. I've, I've been out there, and I've seen those sensors.
They don't, they don't shoot 50 calibers out there, though. That's what the range is for.
But we've seen nothing on hours of operation or anything. I mean, you think if you live somewhere close to there, and they're shooting a 50 caliber machine gun, and you've got some young child that's trying to go to bed and sleeping, you as a parent, deal with that?
No, yeah, I know what you're saying. I grew up here with 155 full rounds going up all summer.
155 rounds going up.
And all houses shaking.
Yeah.
I'm saying is that they, in this report, addressed that issue. Now, whether or not you believe them or not, I don't know what to tell you. But they, they state what they did, and...
I know.
If there's no sound, I mean, you know as well as I do, there are different ranges out there. There are different weapons they're using. They're using weapons, people don't even know, 60-millimeter mortars and all types of stuff that, that they have to train with. And if it's a training base, either get rid of the base, it's a training base. You're gonna have to train on some of the stuff.
I honestly think that they were in lack of education, educating the public. I don't think they did much of an educational, you know, thing. When they tried to sell this, they didn't educate anybody on it. I mean, there's a lot of questions that aren't answered.
Is it possible, is it possible to have them come, or request them come, you know, present this?
Yeah, probably can.
Right? I mean...
I can, I can reach, I can reach out to my contacts there to see if they will. It's interesting, I mean, I go to probably 18 to 20 meetings out there a year, once a month, religiously, and then on the Military Civilian Community Council, on the co-chair. So, I mean, I should know, because I'm the, and, you know, that, we've gotten like, very brief updates. Nothing as detailed as what Chief Miller and I were given after it got in the press more, and the questioning. I will say that it seems like the topic has been pulled off some recent meetings, so I wonder if maybe internally, they're trying to decide, where do they go from here? What do they do next? I will, just to be fair, I think there's a ton of very qualified, respected, you know, worked at the base for decades, not in the military, but environmental people who are the leaders, who cleaned up the water. You know, I think I announced two months ago that they were disconnecting the ejection site from the FS-12 plume, which when, at the time it was found in Sandwich, was the strongest, most contaminated plume of anything they'd have. And now the levels are so low, they were able to stop the extraction, which is great. I mean, they're doing what they said. But, I mean, there's like, super qualified people who were there to protect the environment, and all of us, who were at the presentation and went through why they supported the project. In my personal opinion, they carry a lot of weight, but I don't think the public has heard them give the same presentation that we've heard. So just from my perspective, it seems like, obviously, they have all these reams of reports and paperwork and scientific studies and all the rest, that have been submitted to different federal and state agencies, but most of us haven't seen it. And we did get a great presentation. I almost feel like if they gave that same presentation, not just in each of the four towns, which should get a special presentation, but even, you know, some other ones, Cape wide, I think that would answer a lot of questions, but I don't know if they're willing to do that. But I can, obviously, I'll reach out to my contacts first thing next week and find out if they're available.
Yeah, indeed, please. And, and I think we need more information from them. We need more information from the state, who analyze their work. And, you know, I don't wanna base a decision upon, poor choice of words, by a general on the base, and I don't wanna base a decision upon some, pardon me, but sensationalized, perhaps, news reports and concerns that might be less founded if they'd come out with the studies. Make the studies available, present them in public. Yeah, they did tell us that those are all public records, and you can get them. But you're right, it's not the same unless someone's presenting it to you. That's right. It carries the authority that makes it either, for you to judge the honesty or the truthfulness of it. And all I can say is, I think there's five groups out there that have to go through every one of these factors, and all five groups represented to us at that meeting. And that's why Bud said, have you heard them? If we got them here, a lot of these questions would be, would have been answered. And why, I don't know why they didn't, maybe they felt that having this, all the managers and one rep from every Board of Selectmen around the base was their way of doing the public notice. Too bad. They should have probably done just what we said, come in here and do it. It would take you, you'd have to sit through two hours, and some of it was very involved, but they, they might have done it back then, I think, Bud, because that was one of the concerns they had, was to make more of an outreach to the public.
I read it all through, but I still think if we could get the EPA out and...
They've been involved, right. Every agency you can think of that deals with environment, I think is listed in here somewhere. And they had to go through all of them.
Should we, should we do it like, on a Saturday at the high school auditorium? So, I mean, you know, if we, people are really concerned, they wanna know about it, we could have this place overwhelmed with people. I mean, if we do it on a Saturday at 10 o'clock or something at the high school, in the auditorium, that gives the public the opportunity to come. If they don't come, shame on them, but at least we offer, you know?
Like, what's been, I mean, the other thing is, I mean, really, what's been put out there so far? And then the cherry on the top is the letter, you know, the email. I mean, it's like, I can't see how they wouldn't do these PR sessions at this point, because it's...
It doesn't make any sense, right? Like, this stuff, we're just talking about stuff that doesn't make sense. So it's hard to support something when there's all these pieces that don't make sense. And Bud, I think it's a good idea for you to contact them, but candidly, like, even if they come in here to present, I think the room's gonna be packed. Bobby's probably right about the auditorium.
Yeah.
And I, and I actually, I knew that that meeting was happening. I said, Jesus, is there extra room out there? I'd like to attend. And they said, no, we're only allowing one Selectman and one Manager to come from each town. Okay. So here I sit.
I mean, even that, I mean, you know, like, Mike was talking about the bullet traps and all those things, that's never been, I mean, from the...
Yeah, the blue sky, that blue sky that I had mentioned.
You brought that up, and they addressed it, yeah.
And then I followed up on the, on the letter, it was never mentioned. They didn't, they just like disregarded it, blue sky.
They, they addressed it at the meeting we were at.
Yeah, I mean, in our information packet, you know, you brought it up, and then there was nothing, there was three, three points, but that wasn't one of them. So the clubs around, they've, they've made them do the blue sky, and they didn't have to. Military said, no, not gonna do it.
Bob, explain what the blue sky, I know what it is.
A blue sky is a form of, it's protection that goes off from your point where you shoot. You're shooting a rifle, pistol, handgun, whatever it may be, it covers out a certain distance. So if you were to misfire your gun or whatever, up in the air, that bullet would not go out of the projectile area, it would come back down. And so they call it no blue sky. You can't see any sky from where you're shooting at. It's a protection.
They actually say that's a requirement. So it isn't, it isn't their decision.
All the ranges out there right now, they don't, do not hit for any blue sky at all. They made Monument Beach do a blue sky, and the military has done no blue sky at all.
That means that nothing fired can leave the base, no matter how you fire it.
How you fire it, it hits, if you go like that, it'll, it'll, it'll shoot. If you shoot downrange, where you're supposed to be, they got the protection there. But if it shoots, your gun is up like this, and it fires, it will not go out as a projectile and land, you know, a mile away. 50 caliber can go quite a long distance.
2,000 yards.
Yeah, so it's, you know, and they call it no blue sky.
But again, that was, you're right, David. They probably, one of the reasons they held this meeting was because they knew they were getting bad press. That was the early press, way back before. And my understanding was that they were going to try to do some public things. Why they did, maybe that's when they went to Bourne, I don't know. But I still think if we can get them here to do even a partial presentation of what I saw, a lot of, like, the blue sky, like, shooting at Forestale School, I mean, all the things that people were talking about, or destroying the water.
Do we, just, one thing is, what is their procedure for proceeding forward? Can they just go ahead and do it without...
Yeah, so that was one thing, one thing I was gonna mention, and I'm not, I'm just like stating fact. So with different federal agencies that we've worked with over time, I'm not thinking about the base, but Army Corps, I forget the phrase, I believe it's federal sovereignty, like, oftentimes, we'll bring up issues, and they're like, fine, we appreciate what you're saying, but we're going ahead with our project because a town can't tell the feds what to do. And so, for example, when the Army Corps does certain works, they don't need Conservation Commission approval, or ZBA approval, or any permit from the town. They can go ahead and do stuff. And they follow federal requirements, but not local. And so, not making an excuse, but it wouldn't surprise me if, when they laid out, the big thing that I think they were waiting for, which we heard about, what, like, two months ago, was that determination that it was of nonsignificance from the EPA. So once they got that, then, I know I forwarded it to you, but I got a summary from one of the, my base contacts on, there was gonna be, and I think it was actually an email I sent to Fred, that I forwarded to you guys, because I thought you'd wanna know, because it was, at the time, they were saying there were two separate, I don't know if it was the SAC, the Science Advisory Council, and the CAC, the Civilian Advisory Council, both of them were gonna have a public meeting, then ultimately, it would go to the Senior Management Board, or the, the group that's made up of the three Commissioners at the state level that would make the final decision. Then I was told after that, that they were gonna combine the two subcommittee meetings into one. But I don't believe any of those have been held. I mean, they've held public meetings since, but I don't believe the groups have met yet. So it's, I think they sort of are on hold, that's my guess, Bud.
So you're gonna try to contact...
But I can contact them and see if they will come to one of our meetings, or a bigger venue to do a public forum and a presentation.
Yeah, I mean, or for the, we'd be the host town, right? Have it at the high school or whatever. Enough interest.
I actually think in here, there's, the last page was a summary of the, of the open complaint process, Bud, I think.
Yeah, I only included the, I mean, it went on for like, 100 pages. I only included our page, where our comments from, we talked about it at a meeting, and we outlined what the, what our concerns were, mostly focused on noise, and then I sent a summary of that. And so they sort of, they tried to summarize a longer email into a few bullet points, and then they have comments on the far right. That's the only page I included, because it, it was what we had sent.
So, yeah, it's on the last page. This is only one, oh, yeah. But I was told there was over 600 people that complaints filed, informational requests, so whatever. And these do summarize, these do summarize what they responded to.
Yep.
So you can actually get them if you want, I suppose, all 600, see what they said.
Yeah.
No, they put, and I, just for the people at home, on the last page, I think this is in our packet tonight, you can, it's public on the town website, but it's number seven, public review and comment. And they did a posting in the Cape Cod Times on the 8th of August 2020. I was just saying that Dave, off microphone, I said, but wasn't 2020 the year that they didn't even come see us because of COVID? So they had public comment periods, but it was during COVID, and, you know, and it was a public notice. It wasn't an actual, like, publication or a full, you know, full-page thing to go out.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we know what to do?
Yes.
From my perspective, and I asked for this, so thank you.
Okay, you'll do that, Bud, so you can get them in?
Yep.
Selectmen's meeting--